...development plaits of roundabouts coming within the county, either internal to the subdivision or external on what will be newer county roads. So, I wanted Kim Lee Horn to bring in their roundabout expert to just kinda discuss it with everybody, answer any questions that might come about because I think in this discussion, obviously, no decisions are made, but at least we can all have a better understanding of this so that we can either accept or not accept future roundabouts in certain areas within the county. Some, in my opinion, should be acceptable, some maybe not. Anyway, I'm gonna turn it over to Adam. What's your last? Well, when you get on the mic, just say your last name and who you're with whenever you talk on there, that way whoever's listening might know, and we'll just go from there. Thank you.
Yeah. Good morning, everybody. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I'm Chris Hopkins with Kim Lee Horn. We've been serving the county in various capacities for probably ten years or so.
So, how close are we?
Sorry. Been serving the county in various capacities for ten years or so, and I've been holding Monty and his team, myself personally, here for the last several years, and enjoyed working with the county, and, you know, in part of our role, we've been assisting with some of the development reviews as those have come in, and then assisting Monty and Dale with various infrastructure improvements. So, as Monty mentioned, we, you know, some of the developments had proposed some roundabouts, and we've been looking at those intersections and their designs, and so Monty asked us to come in today and expand a little bit more on our knowledge. And so, certainly, we implement those in various ways throughout Colorado, and Adam is one of our engineers that's an expert in roundabout design, so he's got lots of examples he can go through, certainly can answer any questions about, you know, where they are appropriate, where they're not appropriate, and where we see them used, and then, you know, in particular, he's got a lot of experience with agencies across the United States that have various experiences with them, and so, in that capacity, a lot of times, we get asked to come in for other agencies and review either existing roundabouts that might have issues, or roundabouts that aren't performing well, or similar to you. If it's a community that's new to roundabouts, we can come in and do that and kind of give a little bit more background and details on how they function and operate. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you, Adam, to go.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. So, as Chris mentioned, my name's Adam Gomez. I've been with Kim Lee Horn for about thirteen years, started off as an intern, and got to work with a lot of folks in the industry, specifically with roundabouts. So, you know, it's not, I don't consider myself an expert. The folks that have been kind of training me up and showing me their experiences, I would consider their. Thirty to forty years of experience, much more of an expertise, but I definitely have their support. So, when it comes to questions that I may not be able to answer here, any questions that I may not be able to answer here, I can definitely get us the answers that do come up. So, you know, as Chris mentioned, you know, my work has been more around the country, working with municipalities, DOTs, and NCHRP to kind of develop policy processes and publications when it comes to roundabout design, roundabout checks, roundabout criteria, to make sure that roundabout design is being implemented consistently around the country with various designers. So, most recently, we've been working with TechDOT. TechDOT, obviously, is a giant agency with a lot of land, a lot of inventory when it comes to roadways. They are just starting roundabout design. So, they've brought our team in to kind of help them develop a program that starts with training, it starts with education, and developing guides, developing a standard so that anyone can pick it up and follow rules, specific rules associated with roundabouts. Locally, we've done that for the city of Aurora, the city of Centennial, Colorado Springs, and eventually CDOT in the next, probably, the next couple of months. So, we'll be working with them to develop their policies, guides, standards, preferences, all the important things. So, today, I've got a presentation that's primarily focused on just some general information on roundabouts. We'll talk more about the modern roundabout, and, you know, just a introduction as what the difference is between a modern and, you know, just call it a traffic circle, or the previous roundabout, is the idea of left offset and developing natural deflection on approaches. So, from in the past, you know, say, maybe forty years prior to today, you would have seen more of a radial design, and a radial design is essentially just a circle, and you're going straight into it. So, all the speed control is at the intersection. With the modern designs, we're starting to implement more deflection on the approach so that way, they can be put into places like high-speed rural highways, state routes, interchanges, so this new, modern idea of deflection upstream of the entry allows for that speed control to happen early. So, just to maybe a little bit of a description, or maybe a graphic to kind of just, to show you what that left offset is, you have the center of the circle, and the left offset is essentially moving traffic just to the left slightly to get more of that deflection upon entry. A radial design, you would see this entry move a little bit closer to the right, and it wouldn't necessarily give you as much deflection or speed control on entry or on the approach. So, with roundabouts, obviously, we move around in counterclockwise motion, they come in various shapes and sizes, and in this case, we're showing a two-by-two, which is one of the bigger ones that you can see out there. In Wisconsin, they do have a lot of three-lane entries, so I would call that like the biggest they can get. If you go to Europe, you'll see some bigger ones. I won't necessarily classify them by lanes because in Europe, there's no striping, so it's just kind of a free-for-all. So, here, we have a little bit more control in the states where you see a little bit more of a delineation of striping. Obviously, for, you know, compared to the, oops, compared to the signal, or the always stop, or to the two-way stop, roundabouts utilize a yield control. It is exactly what it's meant to do. It's a yield. You do not necessarily have to stop. Obviously, with heavy congestion, you are going to stop, but if there's a, you know, lighter congestion or midday, you would be utilizing that yield condition, which helps with a couple of things, not just with operations and safety, but also with emissions. So, with an always stop, and you have to have that always stop and hit the brake, you are emitting more emissions. So, there is a, an emissions benefit when it comes to roundabouts and the yield condition. As I mentioned earlier, all approaches are channelized, using deflections, using curvature. In most cases, we try to avoid reverse curves on approaches, so we always try to put a tangent just to make sure that you have proper lining up of the approach, and specifically with bigger trucks. When you have a lot of big trucks entering roundabouts, if you have a lot of reverse curves where it's very windy, you'll see that the swept path of the truck is very windy, and it starts to move back and forth, and it can be a little bit turbulent for truck drivers. So, making sure that you have proper tangents between the curbs really enforces that safety element for the larger truck community. And it's designated to slow traffic down, not only for their benefit, but also for pedestrians, for bicyclists, multimodal. There's been a lot of substantial research and a lot of proof and evidence shown that this is not just beneficial for the drivers, but it is very beneficial for the pedestrians, and then also just entering communities. You'll see a lot more people on bikes, people, you know, wanting to develop around these because it is slowing traffic, it's a calming presence, and it provides a little bit more of a gateway into a community, if you want to call it that. And from a pedestrian standpoint, like I mentioned, it's safety on their perspective. The crossing distances are much smaller, and it's due to the refuge here. So, this splitter median, this raised island, is meant to refuge or store pedestrians prior to crossing. So, as one pedestrian crosses the entry, they'll look to the left, make sure no one's coming, and then they'll stop here at the refuge, and then check to the right to make sure they have adequate space or gap to make the crossing. So, the short, these are actually shortened distances which provide lower conflict points, smaller areas for pedestrians to be hit, compared to more of a traditional always stop or signalized intersection. So, we saw the graphic that kind of showed just a general representation, but here's another one. This is a little bit more of a complex geometry. So, here, we're looking at a five-legged intersection, and again, the benefit of these is you can take a five-legged intersection that's skewed, has a lot of horizontal, or sorry, a lot of sight distance issues, maybe not a lot of speed control, or maybe just confusion in general as to who has priority. The roundabout really does serve as a capture-all when it comes to that. It provides structure, it provides clarity, and it also provides clarity from a geometric standpoint where you can capture all these and soak it into one intersection with very few conflict points. Again, a couple, you know, just some photos of operating roundabouts, but you can see that we do have the yield signs, you have yield striping, and crosswalks just upon your entry. A lot of people ask, you know, why, why are crosswalks so far away from the entries? What you'll notice is, the picture on the left is a good representation as to why. You typically go twenty-five feet away from the ICD, which is where the yield line is, and that is mainly because it is considered a passenger car equivalent. So, you see that red car that's in the middle there, it's essentially identifying you can store a car while not conflicting with a pedestrian crossing point. So, it kind of just differentiates and allows people to enter and stack prior to entering the circle and not conflicting with a crosswalk.
Can I interrupt for a quick second? If that was a truck instead of that red car, where would they stop and yield for that pedestrian?
Yep. So, if you do have a larger truck, say, there's a crossing that already happened, the truck crosses in, they would likely overhang, but in cases where you do have heavier trucks or a larger percentage of trucks entering, you do have the flexibility between going between twenty-five and fifty feet. So, that fifty-foot distance from, for the crosswalk would be there if you have, you know, twenty percent trucks, twenty-five percent trucks where it's a frequent movement. Maybe in this case, this is more of an urbanized area, likely, you know, maybe in a downtown area, there's likely not that many trucks, like, you know, fifty-three footers, fifty-four footers. In this case, it's probably more conducive to passenger cars. So, you do have the flexibility to go between twenty-five feet and fifty feet for trucks.
We have a lot of trucks with trailers, semi-trucks.
Yeah.
I think so. We definitely would want to take that into account.
And it's also context. I mean, if you do have, like what you're saying, a lot of trucks entering, do you need crosswalks? If this is in a rural area, and you don't have any sidewalk connectivity, do you need crosswalks? So, it is very context-driven to make sure that you are putting the appropriate infrastructure in for the appropriate circumstance. And what we're describing here is, you notice that someone stops, you have two vehicles circulating, the vehicle does enter when the proper gap is there. So, what I mean by gap is, that is essentially the flexibility for that vehicle to enter without hitting a vehicle. So, you notice that there's a very small gap here, so they stop. Once that, once that last vehicle leaves, there's an appropriate gap for the vehicle to enter and move forward. So, I really like this image mainly because it does show that truck circumstance, and in kind of to your, to your point, you show that, hey, we don't actually have a crosswalk here, this may be a circumstance where we have a lot more of heavy, that heavy vehicle traffic, and you'll notice there's a lot more, you know, maybe not aesthetically pleasing to the eye when it comes to sidewalk or to the center median, mainly because it's probably being driven over a good amount, just due to the amount of trucks that are entering or circulating. So, it does come down very much to context. Deflection. What do I mean by deflection? In this circumstance, you know, we have a variety of roundabouts varying from compact to multi-lane, and we have different variations of fastest path and how you differentiate the two, and what is conducive to proper speed control. So, from a compact roundabout perspective, you may see this in a context standpoint in neighborhoods, urban areas, town centers. Single-lane roundabout, you can see these in rural areas, heavy truck areas, high pedestrian with high, with high traffic volumes. And then, multi-lane, you'll see that in interchanges, interstates, state routes if necessary. But for multi-lane, you really want to operate with those when you have high operations. You really want to look at converting a safety problematic signal where you have, you know, maybe fifteen thousand vehicles, twenty-five thousand vehicles, but you've seen a fatality, or you've seen a lot of incidences from angled crashes. That's a good op, you know, a good indicator that maybe a roundabout would reduce some of those conflict points, provide you the proper speed control without mitigating those operational benefits. And so, from fastest path, you'll notice that the deflection here, you have a really well-designed left offset, so you have the center kind of delineated by this pole here, the structure, and you can see where these entries are compared to where that approach is. It's, it's very much to the left, and what you'll notice is, that entry deflection is for the speed control. You circulate, you have proper speed control circulating, and then on the exit, you notice it's flatter. The idea with a flatter exit is, again, context situated, where if you have high pedestrians, maybe you don't utilize the flat exit because you'll have faster movements or faster, or faster speeds exiting. The purpose of having this is operations. The slower you get someone in, and the faster you can get someone out, there's a big benefit to operations. So, we don't want people to be overly confused, or to have a turbulent movement out. In some cases, you may want to just get them out as quickly as possible, the flatter exit provides that benefit. And then you'll see some of the rules and regulations when it comes to preferred speeds when you're looking at designs. You'll see that you have a range here, and you'll see the preferred is roughly just under that high threshold. And again, the idea here is, these are all measurable speeds. I call them more theoretical. What we see is, you always want to be able to perform a design check when you have a roundabout that's coming into a planning circumstance, or you're looking to, to design one, you want to make sure that you have the proper checks. Fastest path is a check that can be performed, and I'll have a couple of slides that show what, what that, you know, to illustrate that. But you can theoretically measure these speeds with curves, and what it usually turns out, what I've seen in most cases, is the real-life speeds are much slower. Theoretical is, you get a NASCAR driver, and you've got the line of sight, and they can just blast through that because they can identify it. Most of us can't do that, which is why we're not NASCAR drivers. Again, just another video that kind of highlight a little bit of the movement, and some circumstances, you'll see a couple of trucks in here also, but circulating roadway, you can kind of see the pointer there, is anything within the circulating section here, which in this case is really well illustrated by concrete. You'll see the central island is with this pink here, the pink in the central island, or sorry, central island truck apron landscaping is designated within the pink area here. This pink is called the truck apron. It is intended to capture all truck swept paths, so trailers, oversized overweight vehicles, you know, if you have a delivery of a mobile home that needs to go through here, the truck apron is intended to capture that movement. So, for a swept path, you want the truck to drive over this. It's intended to. It's mountable, it's flexible, it's heavier concrete to make sure it can absorb all that force and weight. It's intended for that to happen. What is not intended is for passenger cars to use it because it does have up to a four-inch raised vertical curb to it, and so if you're a passenger car, you'll feel that more than you would driving a semi-trailer. The landscape island here, you know, there's a lot of conversations as to what should be treated, what should be allowed, what should be acceptable. I'm always a proponent of putting in more. I prefer making sure that you can cut off the site. When you're entering a roundabout, you want everyone to look to their left. Obviously, on the approach, you want folks to look and see, you know, who's coming from a pedestrian standpoint, but once you get past that, you're really just focused to the left. And so, you don't want to look to see who's coming from the other side because you don't, that doesn't, you know, that doesn't pertain to you. So, cutting off that site with trees, with landscaping, with structures, you know, I've seen a Universal Studios globe in the middle of these things. Those are all beneficial, and they're all designed to make sure that you have proper site, intersection, sight distance, that those requirements aren't conflicted by whatever's in the middle of it. So, in this case, you'll notice there's some grass kind of on the outside edges. That is intentional. You want to have the low coverage, low foliage on this outside because you want to make sure that you have proper intersection sight distance, but then, once you get past that, you can do whatever you want. So, there's a lot of flexibility, there's a lot of benefits, there's a lot of, like what I mentioned, a gateway aspect. There's a lot of things you can do as more of a welcoming, or as an aesthetic appeal with these options. And then, from a pedestrian standpoint, we talked about the refuge in splitter islands earlier. Those are intended to be benefits for pedestrians, again, shortening crossing distances. You know, it is, it may be theoretically the same distance to a signalized or always stop, the difference is you have a refuge. So, there's, there's an area for pedestrians to stop, look both ways, look whatever, do whatever they want to do without having to worry to be struck by a vehicle. So, within these refuge and splitter islands, they are raised, similar to the truck apron, and they can be designed to be even taller than the truck apron where they're not as Any questions, these so far?
Yeah. Safety, are you going to cover the safety of the roundabouts versus traffic lights?
Yes. Yep. We'll go, we'll go through some of the conflict points and differences. So, as you mentioned, we do have a little bit of extra mitigation just to kind of help folks understand that you do need to travel clockwise. I think this is a great example because when you get to this approach, it's, you know, it's not necessarily directing you to go to the right. You can kind of make the option here, but we do have some extra signs here to really help reinforce, make sure that you go counterclockwise. Just some extra mitigations. We talked about the central island and how you can, how you can treat it, like we talked about, you can put structures in the middle of it, just make sure you don't conflict with the design-parametrated sight lines. This is also just depicting what that left offset compared to a radial design. Some deflection, path of the traveler. We talked about some of that hardscaping, some of the features that you can add to a splitter island. We talked a little bit about, you know, converting these splitters to be either mountable or non-mountable. Non-mountable would be considered the six-inch curb, so that would be the very same that you would see, you know, on the roads today with curb and gutter to the outside. If you hit that, you'll feel it. You may pop a tire, you may have some damage to your vehicle compared to the four-inch, which is a little bit more forgiving. And then, you always want to make sure that you have at least a six-foot wide splitter for ADA compliance. These are typically two-foot strips for the rumble tactile strips, and then you always want to make sure that you have two feet between that for ADA compliance.
I have a question.
Hmm?
So, currently, with all the county roads, we don't have any sidewalk yet. So, crosswalks are not even a thing currently. I can see it coming. If we end up with a roundabout or two here and there, would, from an engineering standpoint, would you guys suggest building them to have that, that crosswalk gap even though there won't be a crosswalk per se for, say, a few years?
That's a great question. For an example, a real-life example, GDOT, Georgia Department of Transportation, installed a lot of single-lane roundabouts in rural areas. I'm talking in the middle of nowhere, but it was enforced to build this infrastructure and connect with sidewalk, no matter what, in case anything did come at any point. And so, it was in their policy, even if it was, again, in the middle of nowhere, there's no pedestrians, there's no reason for them to be out there, you install it. It was more from a liability standpoint that if someone was walking in the area and they didn't utilize it, they wouldn't necessarily be sued for it. They've provided the, they've provided the infrastructure in case something did come in the future with development, or if someone randomly did want to cross the street.
Okay. Yeah, I can see that being somewhat problematic for us, not that it's not a good idea, because right-of-way is a valuable asset around here and hard to come by. And so, even putting in your standard roundabout is going to be a challenge, you know, at any location currently. Then, if you add extra for sidewalk, it would be even more problematic. So, I mean, hopefully. But that would be a process either we or the developer would have to tackle as, as we went down that road.
Yeah, and it may just be a matter of putting in the cut-throughs or the tactiles, maybe not connecting sidewalk, but at least putting in something, whether you designed for it and you don't install it, but it could be installed later if it was necessary. So, there's definitely variations that you can treat it, just depends on the circumstance, for sure.
I was just going to add to that, Adam, because a lot of the questions and roundabouts are, you mentioned a couple of times, Adam, that they're designed to the context, and so there are variations in that design that we would recommend or that the designer should look at. To really fit the context and the trucks is a great, great one. We look at how many trucks are there versus pedestrians, and you can design a roundabout that is a little bit more tailored to that usage and fits the context. So, that, that's where roundabouts are a little different than just traditional intersections. There's kind of one traditional intersection that you implement has all the elements, but roundabouts, that geometry, the lane widths, the truck apron, all that changes from one to the, to the other based on the context. And I think historically, that's where we found poor examples of roundabouts that were designed either before all these nuanced pieces were developed, or were just not designed to the context of the usage. You know, we've all driven through roundabouts that don't function very well, they don't have that deflection that you mentioned, Adam. So, that's, that's where the industry has changed over the last ten to fifteen years, is really figured out more of those nuanced pieces, so it's not just a circle with straight roads coming in, which doesn't function well, is really problematic for, for trucks, doesn't slow vehicles down appropriately. So, just wanted to mention that. Each, each one of these elements you're pointing out, Adam, is kind of those subtle pieces that, that make a, pick a roundabout and make it into a really good functioning roundabout.
That would be a big discussion topic once we get to that point in a design, is obviously in this county, as Commissioner Buck stated, there's lots of large trucks. Not only that, there's, there's big personal vehicles pulling thirty, twenty-four, thirty-foot horse trailer, cattle trailer, things of that nature. So, I mean, that would, that would be in consideration here, for sure.
And that's exactly, you might have some material later, Adam, but, you know, you mentioned the mountable curb, that, that would be something to consider, is if it's not used very frequently, a four-inch curb might be appropriate if there's just an occasional truck, but if there are more trucks or trailers and things using it, it may be more appropriate to lay that curb down a little bit more and make it not quite as tall, knowing that it'll be used frequently. You still get the benefit that hopefully most passenger vehicles will not attempt to go over it, but that, that's kind of the trade-offs, the compromise that you look at. It's fine, fine details like that, again, that really make a good, good roundabout where you don't have to come back and change things as a county later when it's not performing.
And to sum that up, I mean, no, no roundabout is the same at any intersection, whether it's development-driven, or state-driven, or whatever. They're all unique, they're all different. Surprisingly, you know, you would think, circle, you just kind of put it together. They're all very different. There's all, a bunch of nuances that you can add to it, and a lot of this has been tested and researched and developed through trial and error. I think we've gotten to a good point where there's a substantial amount of roundabouts throughout the country that really helped define a clear picture as to what is the best practice. I'm currently working with FHWA to investigate more of the two-by-two elements, where, you know, thirty years ago, where two-by-twos were being installed, there were a lot of problems, but with some of the new ones that are coming in, we're seeing those problems be removed. So, how can we convert those old ones into more of the modern designs at low cost and have substantial reward for that investment in cost? So, there's, this is all research-driven, it's not just someone's opinion, this is all trial and erred. A couple of rules, and again, this comes down to education. Not everyone knows this, and, you know, it's, it's important to make sure folks understand, and especially when it comes to design. When you look at designing a truck apron, you want to make sure that you have the proper design vehicle tested. We utilize a software called Autoturn, which does a very conservative, and I'll say conservative because I don't know the methodology, I don't know the algorithms, I just have seen drivers do much better, and I've seen drivers do much worse, so I think Autoturn does a good job of assuming a very conservative approach. But knowing what your design vehicle, knowing what the intersection needs to, you know, what it's, what they're going to see frequently is important, because if you don't, you'll see this. And believe it or not, this happens more often than not. And you'll notice this is a very small truck apron compared to what that standard, you know, twelve to sixteen-foot looks like. This is probably more of an eight. I mean, you can see... I mean, you can see some of the issues from that. So not all roundabouts require landscaping. They, they do have fully traversable central islands, which typically you see in the mini roundabouts. But what fully traversable means is this truck can actually drive completely over the center. The, the truck apron, there is no landscaping, it is all truck apron. There's no signs, a truck can navigate completely over it with no issues. And again, context. Not all intersections need that. But if you have, you know, some experience I've had is out there on the coastline of Georgia where you have a lot of the freight and a lot of those things that come in from the boatyards. They are designed to capture double dolly trailers. Those are a hundred and ten foot long trailers that are carrying two of these. And no roundabout unless you make it giant can capture that. But if they can fully traverse over, you shrink the footprint and it's, they're able to make that movement no problem. So again, tractor trailers, sweatpaths, they're, they're meant to be utilizing this truck apron. When it comes down to, you know, a bus, call it a school bus, a school bus is intended to only be designed to be able to circulate and navigate every movement within the circulatory. A bus, specifically a school bus, is not intended to drive over the truck apron due again to what it's carrying, if it's children, if it's passengers, if it's people. You know, is there a chance that they could tip over? Sure. So the intent is make sure that your design accounts for that to be within the circulatory. Again, context. Know who the audience is and be able to design around it. This one does say fire trucks. We've done a lot more research to come to realize that fire trucks have no problem running over this thing. You know, when we're looking at the ladder trucks, the one hundred and ten foot trucks, they have no problem driving over this thing. I'm actually going to be going through a truck rodeo, so I'll get some more evidence of that tomorrow. And I can probably share some video. We'll have a couple of fire trucks going through a couple of roundabouts similar to this to see what they can and can't do. So I'll be able to share some of that maybe at another time.
Adam, I was just going to add a quick note there. You know, the re, we could just design roundabouts where the, the circle itself is big enough that trucks can go all the way around it. But the reason we don't is the cir, well, one, the circle gets very big and is just impactful to land, needs more right of way. But the, the other reason, important reason is when you get a circle that big and, and historically, we, roundabouts were maybe oversized in some ways when they were trying to really accommodate trucks through the circle. The, when a passenger car goes through that large of a circle, then it can go so much faster that you lose some of the operational benefits of a roundabout and the safety benefits. You get much higher speeds circulating and then drivers that are entering those roundabouts have trouble judging those gaps because cars are coming at them a little too fast. So the modern roundabout design here makes that circle kind of a compromise where passenger vehicles don't use the truck apron and so they go slower in the appropriate speeds. But then trucks can use that truck apron and so that accommodates both vehicles that way.
Yeah, I've recently witnessed at Meridian and Woodman in Falcon, at the new King Supers, at their roads around there, they have a roundabout to enter into there off of Meridian Drive. And it does have the truck apron, it's a fairly wide one, it's probably twelve or sixteen at least. And I got to be right behind a semi truck that went around that. And of course, the tractor stayed within the driveline. And yes, the trailer, the fifty-three foot trailer did clip up on the mountable curb and just went, you know, about a, a foot, the, the rear duals around the roundabout, but it rode it very well. There was no chance of it tipping over. It was interesting to watch right from right behind it.
Yeah, that's a-
Worked very well.
Well-functioning one, yeah, yeah, for sure.
And, and you know, the treatment of that mountable curb is very important. You know, recently driving through a couple up north in the Fort Collins Loveland area, there are a few that aren't utilizing a four inch mountable. They're using more of a four inch non-mountable. And there is a big difference between something that is accommodating to those, to those trailers compared to something that is not. And so making sure that you have, you know, good, I would say guidelines or good guidance to, you know, give developers, give designers some influence as to what your preferences are, go a long way. Because if you don't, you kind of leave it up to a lot of folks' own devices. And there are some misinterpretations when it comes to what is mountable versus what is non-mountable. We talked a little bit about, you know, trucks circulating. Here's some, just some mitigations from a safety perspective when it comes to passenger cars and, you know, fusing them with trucks. You'll see that on the sign here to the right. We do have this where you don't want to really have, even though you have a large area here for the entering, folks may misinterpret that and try to cut in. And so we've seen that these signs do provide a little bit more of that mitigation and influence drivers to really focus on being behind the trailer instead of trying to get to the side. Again, this is primarily with single lanes. What we've seen with multi-lanes, most truck drivers, especially if they're trying to turn left, are going to be on the inside compared to the outside. So it does come down to context. But these signs are added as mitigation. You'll see this is a, a two-lane entry in this photo. So again, it's just extra. You add that extra documentation, you add that extra sign to give folks a little bit more heads up.
I was just going to add, I'm sorry, I keep interrupting you because I'm behind you, so I can't show you. But just, just real quick note on that, that became a state law last year that to not pass trucks within a roundabout. So it is enforceable and, and so those signs now are, we've added them in a few locations to help emphasize that for drivers, but that was, that was a state change that was made last year.
Again, so just another example of just why context is important and why choosing the right material is important. This is a very common, it's a very long, but very common lowboy. So maybe ignore the length of it, but a lowboy, mobile home, any kind of construction delivery, they need to be able to mount this area. But because they do have low, you know, bottoms to them, they're typically about six inches, maybe, depending on the load, they need to be able to mount that without scraping. So you'll hear, you know, in, in the NCHRP guidance or other guidance, you'll hear scraping. This is an illustration of what that means. So making sure that you have that four inch proper mountable and then making sure that you have proper distance between the non-mountable versus mountable with the truck apron, because you can see again, you're, you're starting to get in that proximity and getting pretty close to it where there's going to be a problem. Again, some other safety factors when you, when you're mixing in pedestrians or multimodal. There are elements to essentially move bikes off of a bike, bike lane where they transition onto a ramp. In some circumstances, you will need to utilize multimodal where you need at least a ten foot. And that did recently change from eight foot minimum to ten foot minimum. I think it's typically twelve foot, twelve foot preferred now. But they utilize bike ramp facilities. I would utilize this, I'm not, I mean, I'm a big biker, but I'm not comfortable going through a roundabout and I deal with them every day. So these are very popular, very common, even with single lane roundabouts, but typically standard on multi-lanes. Now, a very comfortable bicyclist who does it, you know, every day or is very adamant about it, they'll just navigate through the roundabout no problem. It just comes down to comfortability. So when you're looking to install these, you want to, again, context is important, but you also want to provide it for, you know, safety elements for everyone. And I think this does a good job of capturing that. So we talked about crosswalk locations, I won't get into that. We talked about the refuge and bike ramps. So again, just some more illustrations to help give you some ideas of what this looks like. Like we talked about, bicyclists feel comfortable, some bicyclists don't. Think this will work? Nope. There's a video, but this guy is essentially going to show you two options. He'll travel through it or he'll use the bike ramp facilities to, to get off the intersection. Safety, so a difference between a typical signalized intersection versus an all-way stop or, or two-way stop compared to a roundabout. From a safety perspective, you're looking at a major reduction in conflict points. So conflict points would be anywhere a car will intersect with another car moving in a different direction or even the same direction, because sideswipes do technically count. These are primarily focusing on the three elements of diverging, merging, and crossing. And this is just vehicular conflict points, this is not pedestrian conflict points added to it. So if you add any kind of crosswalk facilities here, you'll essentially add two per crosswalk. So additional conflict points. Compared to the roundabout, you do see a number of eight. And that would be for single lane, it would essentially double if you do have a multi-lane. But again, compared to the doubling effect of the multi-lane with a typical intersection, you are still under that reduction for conflict points. I think one of the major elements that you see is a, is a dramatic reduction in, you know, severe angle crashes, fatalities. Angle crashes are the number one indicator for injuries. So eliminating those types of collisions, that may be a left turn at the intersection, someone running a red light. That is, that is where you see the most substantial safety improvements from a roundabout compared to a signal, even an all-way stop. I always give this illustration of signs are very suggestive. You don't have to abide by them, there's nothing necessarily there telling you that you have to use it unless there's a police officer at the intersection. So it's very suggestive. With a roundabout, it is controlled. It is geometrically forcing a driver to slow down, move in, in one direction of flow and it's really eliminating a lot of these human factors that you would see more prevalent at a signalized intersection or just a standard. This is one that I've, I've really, I really, I really want to emphasize because when we're looking at standard intersections, like I said, signs are suggestive. So even if it's an all-way stop, you can blast through there at fifty miles an hour if you want to. This kind of gives you an, an idea as to what the percentages of survival are when you are struck by a vehicle at a certain mile an hour. So when you're looking at anything over that twenty-five mile an hour or under that twenty-five mile an hour, you have an eighty-nine percent chance of surviving it. And as you move up in speed, you know, makes sense, right? I mean, faster you go, more, more force you're going to get hit with. Our bodies are very fragile, so yeah, you're more likely to, to pass. But roundabouts are designed to fall within this, you know, within the twenty-five and thirty mile threshold, that's where you're going to see much of the, the safety value, safety benefits. Because when you're looking at from a safety perspective, a life has a, has a dollar amount to it. And so what you'll see in a lot of these safety studies and DOTs are focusing more on converting signals where there's a fatality to a roundabout, well, because the DOTs are responsible for that fatality. There's a lawsuit, there's liability, there's so many elements that factor into it that cost, has a monetary value to it. So by eliminating those types of incidences, you're really providing a benefit in the sense of you're preserving a life, but you're also creating value and efficiency with where you're spending your dollars. So just some areas for, for consideration when it comes down to, you know, when should you use a roundabout? And what are the benefits of them? So from a cost perspective, there are, there is a high-end cost to roundabouts at the beginning. But the benefit of it is you do not have to update software, you do not have to update maintenance when a storm comes through and it blows down a signal or, or whatever. With signals, you have to upgrade software, you have to build some sort of infrastructure to be able to monitor those signals. So with a roundabout, it is what it is, it is a high upfront cost. But there's very limited maintenance. Maintenance would be landscaping if, depending on if you do it or not. Maybe some concrete, you know, after a couple of years, you have heavy trucks that are going through it, you may need to replace a little bit of concrete. And then again, maybe some striping when you do have snow and you need to put down salt. There may be some need to put some updated striping cost. But when you look at those elements for cost, there is a big difference. So from a lifespan perspective, roundabouts are more efficient and cost-effective compared to signals. From an efficiency standpoint, the benefit with roundabouts there is, you know, signals provide, you know, large queues and what you call those queues that go from, you know, one signal to another is a platoon. A roundabout eliminates the platoon effect. So as you leave a signal at a green light, you have a, a line of cars that go on to the next one. And if you're like me, you feel like you get every single signal going down a street. A roundabout essentially breaks that up. So it provides bene, it provides a balance at the intersection to allow for those platoons to be removed and you have certain gaps between each vehicle. So that's eliminating that platoon effect. So where you see the benefit of that is efficiency during the peak hours. So you have a large influx of, of vehicles that are leaving work or going into work. It really, again, provides that benefit to all users at the intersection and removes the platoon effect. And again, just again, sustainability, no re-timing for signals, survive severe weather and then no need for traffic equipment.
I did recently do a little bit of homework and, and it seemed like from what I could study out, traffic signals run about five to ten thousand dollars a year in maintenance cost, depending on, and that's not counting, I don't think if you have big storm, things of that nature. That's just average standard maintenance. It seemed like the roundabouts were much less depending on if you had landscaping in the center or something like that. If you don't, it seemed like it ran right around a thousand dollars or less per year.
Yeah, and a, a bag of concrete, it is going up nowadays, but from that perspective, a bag of concrete's pretty inexpensive.
Yeah, and my, another cost I know other jurisdictions have put into that equation is the, just the electricity to run the signal or multiple signals. You know, there's, there's an annual cost to that too, which of course isn't necessarily at the roundabouts. Yep, equipment costs, electricity, all that is ongoing maintenance costs. It's eventually becomes more than the, the roundabouts.
And then just some other I would consider less important, but if you do want to emphasize on aesthetics, intersection footprint when it comes to right of way. Roundabouts do require a little bit more right of way, especially when you consider, you know, a, a standard intersection, you may need to miter the corners from a right of way perspective. So there are some, some impacts there with footprint. But there is a big traffic calming effect with, with these types of intersections. So where to install, you know, the number one area to really consider a roundabout is where you do experience a high volume of fatalities or injury-related crashes. Again, those will be like those major intersections with left turn lanes where there's a lot of, you know, there may be left turn only or no right on red. That's where you typically see a lot of those angled related crashes where you have a lot of, you know, injury-related. Those are typically the number one conversions to roundabouts. Where you do have a high volume of pedestrians, bicyclists, those are typically good installation locations. You can see there with total vehicles entering the twenty thousand daily, that is a, a very common threshold from a single lane perspective. Where you need to go beyond the twenty thousand is where you would see multi-lane, maybe even a hybrid, where it doesn't need to be a two-by-two, it could be a two-by-one. There's different variations of multi-lane that you can have. Where you do need to affect, you know, traffic calming, that's where, you know, you see a lot of developments converting over to the roundabout within the develop, developments, especially where you have mixed use or single family, multifamily. Those are very common intersection controls just because of the context. Again, you have folks using bikes in the area, a lot of kids in the neighborhoods. Those just provide again, the natural speed control and traffic calming effects. This is a very common one, I, I would love to move it up the list. But when it comes to signalization and warrants, where you, a signal's not necessarily warranted, a roundabout's a good option to look at in installation. But it is very, again, context-sensitive. If it is a high volume and there's not substantial separation between the two intersections, you want to study the effects of queue. Will one, will the roundabout queue spill back into the signal? Or will the signal spill back into the roundabout from a queue perspective? So how many cars are stacking up? You want to make sure that there's enough separation and enough distance between the intersections to have no, no interference between the two. Where you have a substantial skewed intersection, you know, the standard, sorry for everyone online, but standard is the ninety degree, anything beyond that is a skew. That really affects the sightlines, sight distances between your intersections. So when it comes to sight distances between your roundabout intersections, they're much smaller footprint compared to a standard signal or a skew.
I was just going to, real quick, Adam, touch on that. I think in the terms of the county, that skewed intersection is a very applicable case because, you know, we've, we've looked at several intersections that are just the old alignment of the county road, we're, we're kind of stuck with where that is. We're kind of stuck with where that is, but there are a lot of angled intersections that make it challenging. And so roundabouts are a really convenient way to solve those intersections rather than having to do long realignments. You know, the real solution to keep a traditional intersection may be several thousand feet of realignment, which takes a lot of right-of-way. But a roundabout can take those angles right at the intersection and turn them into a safe, functioning intersection. So that's a case we a lot of times see good applications for roundabouts.
So where caution is advised, like we talked about, you know, proximity to signals, this is a good one. This is topography. So roundabouts are designed from a grading perspective. There are rules and regulations to avoid more of the tipping effect where you would, if you have a left-turning, you know, commercial vehicle making the left turn, there is a chance for tipping over depending on how you grade the circulating. So in areas where you have a 10% grade for a standard roadway or an intersection, may not be feasible for a roundabout just due to the nature of, that's a 10% grade. So there's a lot of consideration when it comes to topography. And then, you know, when you're looking at a combination of safety and operations, if you have a lot of pedestrians, maybe a mall, may not be the most beneficial for an operation standpoint. So again, context. If you want to limit, you know, if you want to increase safety, a roundabout may be good and you're willing to sacrifice operations, maybe it may be good to consider a roundabout. But if you want to benefit more of the operations and less of safety, you may want to reconsider a roundabout.
What about, have you guys seen the application in the areas of a school, like say, right in front of the school? Where it's high traffic in the morning and afternoon, but during the day, it's not that impactful?
And that's a great example because the school, there is, yes, to answer your immediate question, absolutely. Schools are unique because they do have an introduction of a new peak time, right? So typical school time exit is maybe two to three every day. And where you see a traditional intersection, maybe more eight to five, right? 5:00 PM to six or eight to nine. School is, you know, seven to eight and then maybe a two-to-three time. So it just comes down to comfortability with the school, but integrating the school in the decision-making is important, what I've seen to be very beneficial. And then there's been a lot of great progress with public outreach with schools, introducing schoolchildren to roundabouts and teaching them how to utilize it and drive it. They take that back to their parents to educate them. So a lot of groundbreaking has been done when it comes to public outreach with schools and integrating these into schools because there are a lot of great benefits when it comes down to traffic calming. And then even circulation because you do have that influx of everyone coming to pick up the kid and then also needing to navigate out without disrupting the rest of the network. So again, the roundabout soaks up all those issues and balances everything. So there are a lot of great examples, and I'll probably send you some photos of, or maybe some KMZ files with examples of where those are located.
Real quick, just for time, wanted to check, how are we doing on time? I want to make sure we answer questions too.
Okay.
Do you, sorry, Adam, I didn't know the rest of your presentation there. Was there anything we want to make sure that we answered for you before those 10 minutes?
I have some specific ones, but I'm under no timeframe, so.
Well, the only one I had was, you know, we talked a little bit at the beginning about guidelines and policies, but we also talked about really no two roundabouts are the same. So do the guidelines and policies from one municipality or one county or one geographic area, if you had a copy of those guidelines, do they apply or do you need your own set for your district or your municipality or what have you?
And that's a great question. So I'm bringing up what we did with the city of Aurora. It does not have to be per municipality, DOT. There is national standards, and it's 1043, where it is just broad-based. This is the bare minimum that you should use. When it comes down to specific municipalities or DOTs, it comes down to what material do they prefer? Georgia does not experience a lot of snow. Colorado does. So there's a little bit of difference of material that are used. So from a DOT standpoint, they try to capture everything as well, but then when it comes down to places like Aurora where they're maybe putting in more or more frequently, they want to make sure that designers are at least using certain elements consistently. And that typically comes down to the material. So in this case, you can see, you know, this is what they want to see from a, you know, material and signing perspective for many roundabouts. You'll see it, you know, sign placement, standard ICDs, and you'll see it's more picture-related because if you're like me, I don't want to read through all the text and try to find everything. I want you to point it out to me. So this does a good job in Aurora's Centennial, Colorado Springs, they do a great job of just illustrating it for you and telling you what needs to be done.
Yeah, so specifically, my question related to, does Elba County have to develop their own set of guidelines or policies for roundabouts? Or is that something you can just say, here's something you can use, this is what we recommend, and we can just move forward and keep it simple?
Aurora is published. It's out there for consumption, and it would be a great one to use. You can use CDOT from a state perspective if you don't want to use Aurora, but you can just, that's easy to reference. You don't necessarily have to build your own.
Now, when you talk about context, so Castle Rock has some roundabouts. There's no way on some of them that they have, you're going to get a semi through there. They're just small. And, you know, then you see other ones that are larger, and I assume that's by design. They don't want trucks going through the downtown area or that sort of thing, and they're just trying to avoid that? Or I'm trying to decide why some of them are designed larger, obviously for trucks and trailers and different things. But then you see some of the smaller ones, and is that just something that the trucks figure out or they know not to go through that area? It's a downtown area. How does that work?
Depends on the truck, but if you're talking more of the commercial standard 53-foot trailers, most of the ones in Castle Rock can navigate that. But if you're talking about something that you have to, you know, submit a permit and they have to give you the designated route, those designated routes for oversized or they usually try to avoid those where they're not designated for it. So there is a large inventory, and CDOT does a good job of keeping up with that to know this is not designed for a mobile home. This is not designed for a 110-foot trailer. They try to find their way to navigate around that. But typically, it's from a permit perspective. Most of them are designed for a 67, which is the 53-foot trailer trucks.
Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think within the county regs, I mean, there could be something very standard implemented, you know, with the left deflecting and that kind of thing. But then as the process moved, say, a developer's installing this or whatever, then it would be based upon, the design would be based upon the traffic studies, you know, the implementation of where it's at, topography, all that, correct? I mean, the regs would be a pretty standard guide, but then it would get much more custom designed as the process went on.
That, I was going to add that. The national standards get you to these big-picture elements, but a lot of communities put additional requirements in there more for those treatments and things for consistency. So the county would have consistency, you know, throughout the community, which I think is important too, so drivers have an expectation when they come to each roundabout that it operates the same way. And then those material choices, the curb heights, those I think would be good to have standards established so that you know that every roundabout in the county, you know, can accommodate trucks with the right mountable curb heights and that sort of thing. So it's not a lot that would have to go in, then I wouldn't say, but enough to make sure that you're really getting the kinds of roundabouts you want. And then also, from a development standpoint, I would suggest that there's a certain design package that has to be submitted with each roundabout, as Adam went through a lot of those criteria. That makes it easier to review and confirm that whoever the designer was followed the right fastest path and sight distances and things, again, that set those roundabouts up.
I'm sorry, I did miss quite a bit. I guess my concern is with school buses. Are these able to accommodate school buses? Because most of the failures I've seen with roundabouts are when they are designed for cars and trucks, but school buses, they seem to fail a lot on, especially during the winter. And then I'm kind of curious, like, is the signage going to be an issue? Because I've seen where school buses or ambulances even going through have issues, and then the signage that's there gets knocked down, bent. You see the tracks going over the middle of the roundabout where the circle is because they can't fit in the actual lanes. So I'm just kind of curious is what we're looking at going to be able to accommodate school buses and ambulances and things like that.
And that's part of the checks that we've mentioned earlier, that Chris mentioned right now, was when you're reviewing a package for a particular intersection, you want to look for elements like you just discussed. Can it accommodate a school bus? And when it accommodates a school bus, the school bus is not intended to track over the truck apron. It is intended to navigate any movement within the circulatory to avoid those issues where tipping over or whatever, hitting a sign. So if, when you're requesting that information from a developer, from a designer, they need to be able to provide you with these types of images to show you the particular vehicle that you're wanting to check and that it can navigate appropriately through. So it is all, you know, they are totally intended to be designed for those and accommodate them, but it is very, it is just as important to make sure that the designers are implementing those into the design and that they have a way of showing and proving that it is effective and it does work.
I appreciate that. I'm familiar with roundabouts, and I've seen them designed specifically to accommodate the large animal trucks and for beef, hauling beef, and then also even wind farm designs that have extra lanes that accommodate the really large trucks. I was just curious if we discussed in the scope that it would be able to accommodate, you know, like a fire engine, you know, emergency services are extremely important out here to the community. So I just kind of wanted to make sure that that was being included in the thought process. Sounds like these things are customly designed.
That's a great point. I think that's exactly the kind of fine details you could put in the standards is a requirement that buses have to navigate through on the pavement without the truck apron to avoid all those issues. And that, the national guidelines have recommendations for that, but they don't necessarily dictate that. That's where the context is. But as a county, you could state that that's the requirement within the county to tap that for all your roundabouts.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I'm accurate on this, but there is one being installed at Hancock and the new Delbert Extension, a roundabout currently. Elizabeth Fire did have some input on their fire truck on that roundabout. So, I mean, they do get a chance to interject as well.
Thank you.
So just a couple of the last slides, just showing what some of those guidelines and guidance look like. Again, more visual, but this gives you a lot of guidance as to how to check for the fastest path, how to check for the R1, R2, and R3, even R4 and R5. So again, just some quick elements to show, you know, hey, how are you measuring this? Well, it's a five-foot offset. Why is it a five-foot offset? Well, most vehicles are 10-foot wide, so the idea is get them as close to the curb where it's a deflection and really forces you to slow down to see what that fastest movement is. So these are just, this is just one graphic that speaks 1,000 words, and this can really, this right here can save a lot of headache trying to figure out what is the design speed here and is it going to be good enough? And then again, just another assortment of sight distance checks and things to consider when looking at roundabouts. I think that's it for the most part unless you have any particular questions.
Yeah, I've been making some notes, so I have some questions. Talked a little bit about right-of-way, issues for roundabouts versus a normal, a traditional intersection, but it would be the difference in the footprint between a traditional intersection versus a roundabout.
So traditional intersections, depending on, again, the context, if it is a signalized, you need to account for acceleration, D cell lanes, right turn, left turn lanes. Those all need to account for storage, right? So bare minimum typically is 120 feet. Well, that could impact a lot more right-of-way away from the intersection where the roundabout focuses more on the intersection. So you wouldn't install a multi-lane approach where you only have two lanes today, so you don't need to account for that. You really only need to focus on the intersection. So that might be mitering the corners where you have parcels compared to a standard intersection where you need to go beyond, you know, the right-of-way at the intersection. So it may be down each leg depending on how many accelerations, right turn lanes, D cell lanes that you may need.
I was going to add too that from a development's perspective, depending on, you know, if the roundabout was built by the county or if was it a requirement of a development, the nice thing about a roundabout is it doesn't require those separate turn lanes that come in, you know, maybe you have, don't need two left turn lanes immediately day one, and so a developer is ultimately obligated to build one left turn lane, and then the county's left in the future years to add those additional lanes as traffic grows. Where a roundabout, it's a single lane that comes in and the approaches already accommodate all that future traffic volumes. There is a nice future-proofing to roundabouts when you build them, higher upfront cost, but it's there for those future volumes too. It already accommodates that within that footprint.
What he's describing is an expandable option where you can design it today to be single, and then with limited resources in 10 years, 20 years, you can expand it to multi-lane. So you build the infrastructure early when it's less expensive compared to 20 years later where it may be more expensive, but you will be able to accommodate extra capacity in the future if you need it.
That jumps to my next question then. The initial cost for a roundabout versus traditional light stop signs? There was discussion that it was more expensive, but what exactly, how much more expensive?
Yeah, so typically, you'll see more of the upfront cost to build it initially. To give you exact numbers, I couldn't give you one, but I would say it's about a 30% extra cost compared to a standard signalized intersection. But then again, over the lifespan, that's where you see the cost efficiency and cost benefit.
There are some agencies across the country now which are requiring an analysis of exactly that, the cost upfront, and so they do a lifespan, you know, a 20-year horizon cost comparison of roundabouts and signals. Because that was, part of the problem was it was almost, almost always cheaper to do the signal upfront. And so if that was your only deciding cost, it just led to a lot of signals. But if you looked over 10 to maybe 15 years, then that was the break-even point.
Yeah, exactly. So to add to that, does the county, I mean, do you all do more mast arms or spanwire for signalized intersections?
More, yeah, yeah. The county doesn't have a.
Yeah, we don't have one. So with signals, what we've seen recently, just due to influx and hard to get, mast arms are the poles to essentially place your signals. Those are very hard to get, and they're becoming more and more expensive. So there used to be this huge gap between a signal and a roundabout. The last 10 years, specifically the last three years, that's gotten a lot closer because those mast arms are very expensive and there's a lot, a long lead time to get them. So you have to plan, I would say, almost 12 months, almost a year ahead of time before you can even get that thing wherever you need it.
Commissioner, what I'd like to see happen and what is happening currently with the first roundabout that we'll end up taking maintenance on is off-site improvements by development. So the upfront costs won't really be impactful, the additional 30% necessarily that impactful for a taxpayer based on it would be the requirement of the developer. So whereas signalization, yeah, that's, could be a requirement of them as well, but immediately the public work staff has to take on, you know, the maintenance aspect of that and training and certification and all that, which we're going to have to get there anyway. But it's my two cents on that.
So the, there was a slide that talked about 20,000 daily traffic was kind of optimal number, a high number. If it more than that, it was going to need an additional lane or maybe it's not there. So that, that's the number for like a diminishing return on its effectiveness. I'm wondering if a daily rate, for our purposes, may not tell our full story as we're a very high commute county, and so we have those high-volume areas during the commute time, but the other places we're not. And so I'm wondering if there's studies that show like per hour volume where there's a diminishing return on that.
Yeah, so when we first look at studying an intersection to see if it's feasible to convert. to convert, we do look at turning movement counts and that's based off the peak hours. So, that's going to be your morning peak and then your evening peak. What I've started doing is even looking at the midday peak because you may have, again, the context may come down to, well, folks want to go to lunch or whatever. So, we do look at the hourly volumes. I think for the most part, just to keep it more general, because I, that's more of the micro. From a macro perspective, it's just more of, let's look at the total daily volume to kind of give some perspective and some ideas of what the thresholds are, but from an hourly, hourly perspective, we definitely do study those. And then when you're looking at what can it, what can it handle from an hourly perspective, you know, it varies, but when you're looking at it, I think what I'm, what I've seen is about, you know, maybe 10,000 in an hourly, again, during those AM and PM peaks where you see it the most.
I think just as, kind of a basic rule of thumb is roundabouts typically are more operationally efficient, so they can handle more traffic volume than a intersection with the same laneage. So, a single lane approach for a traffic signal, a roundabout has a little bit higher efficiency, so it processes more vehicles with less delay.
It's, it's, it's the focus on delay. So, if you're at a signal and you're waiting for, you know, the green time, you may have to account for a pedestrian that needs to cross. So, when you're looking at a roundabout, it is just yield. So, if there's no one on the side streets, you don't need to stop. You just keep going. The yield effect really benefits with the operations and it really reduces that delay and that delay reduction is roughly 60%. So, that's why it can handle more than your standard intersection because there is, there's a variation in traffic and balancing that.
With that said, while you're talking about the two, which is safer, the light or the roundabout?
The roundabout has a major reduction in conflict points, so that's where you go from standard four, always stop or a signal, 32 conflict points compared to a roundabout where you have eight.
Can you go back to that slide, you think, and show county?
It's a very good slide. Yeah, we, we present a lot, you know, for new roundabouts and doing community outreach and some of the statistics we show, and there are some roundabouts that have higher crashes when they're installed, but they're low angle crashes, low speeds, so there are more property damage and where they really, really excel is at reducing fatal crashes and those high-speed crashes.
So, this is the, this is a vehicular conflict point, so it would, it would increase with pedestrians also, but just from a vehicular standpoint, 32 to eight in comparison for the standard single lane and for a standard signalized intersection.
One of those close there, talked about one of the effectiveness was a calming effect on drivers. We've never gone through a roundabout with my mom if you think it's a calming effect. So, that kind of segues in, right? The, the older drivers, myself and older are having a more harder time adjusting the roundabouts and I think it's, having taught three kids how to drive, I think initially it's harder for them to judge when it's safe to enter the roundabout than a, than a more seasoned driver. So, I think on those two extremes, the, the younger and the older, it's a, it's a more difficult intersection for them to traverse and our, our population is more on the retirement side. And so, somewhere that, that has to be a thought. Maybe it doesn't affect, but it certainly gives my mom a lot of anxiety to coming up to a roundabout. So, that's just food for thought. The other question I have is about snow removal and drainage. Does it, is this easier, is it harder to do snow removal? I'm imagining the center is coned a little bit and so if we have snow piled up in the middle as it melts and it runs across the road, we have a higher incidence of black ice. How does the snow removal and drainage affect versus a traditional intersection?
Yeah, so from a snow removal perspective, from what I've typically seen with these is you'll have the larger loader or the larger remover start and then you'll have a smaller coming from behind to track any of that extra and you typically don't load it into the center. You'll typically load it to the outside, so that larger scraper will come in, grab everything it can and move it out to one side, make the round to come back. It may circulate the whole thing and try to push everything to the outside shoulder to avoid that topping of the truck apron for a couple of reasons. You still want to be able to utilize that truck apron if you need it, but also for that icing effect where if it is draining, how can we avoid it from crossing the road? So, another element that's been used is with the curb and gutter on the truck apron, instead of having it flow out, you keep it in, so that way any, any snow that is melting and falling down into the, into the curb, it's captured. So, you can place a drop inlet, you can place some sort of structure to collect that before it crosses the road. So, there's, there's definitely different elements, but from a snow removal perspective, it typically gets pushed out to the outside. You'll have a smaller one come from behind to kind of clean up whatever it can and then if you do have to load it to the center, you would utilize that curb and gutter to capture it before it made its way out to the roadway or the icing.
So, I, I could understand how that would work in a development, but in our county roads, we don't have curb and gutter, we have ditches, so it would have to be flowing out if there was something.
It would be just like the way we snow plow now where it would be just shoved off the shoulder of the road on this. And I can tell you, because I've done it a lot, like the intersection of 13166, it's very time-consuming and it doesn't even have turn lanes associated. Well, it does on the one side, on the east, east and westbound side. But, anyway, it's very time-consuming to, to plow that intersection, to get it completely clean, because you got to make many swipes and, and strategically determine where you're going to place that snow, especially with the guardrail that's associated with that intersection. I can see, I've never snow plowed a roundabout, but I can see where it would be much more time-efficient.
Yeah, we, we've worked, when we've implemented roundabouts and worked with maintenance departments and sometimes as they appreciate the roundabout, especially if you have two that are kind of booked, booked in on a corridor because they serve as a U-turn and so they can actually hit a critical corridor that way and use the roundabout to keep turning around and plow that segment without having to find other turnaround points. You know better than me on that, Monty, but that, that is one feature that a roundabout also helps with in some of the snow plowing operations. I guess one other distinction, because you mentioned it, Commissioner, is the curb and gutter. So, we, we do recommend even on rural roundabouts that don't have curb and gutter, that at the roundabout, there is curb installed because of that need to slow traffic down and if you have a wide shoulder, the stripe is there, but the vehicle could ignore the stripe and just drive right through there. So, we, we design ours with curb and gutter out to those splitter islands and then after that it transitions back to a shoulder. So, you still don't have to have, depending on the topography, you don't necessarily have to have storm sewer, so you wouldn't have to maintain that money, but it would be designed then to flush out the drainage from, away from the roundabout and then back into the roadside ditches.
It would drain in the middle and then there'd be some type of drainage going underneath the road out.
If you did that.
In some cases, in some cases around the circulatory, you would want to have curb and gutter outside, on the outsides, but you could do a variety of things. You could have a cut, a spillway or it's just a curb opening relatively small where a vehicle won't necessarily go through it, but open enough for water to pass. You may have a concrete spillway that'll drop it down to the ditch so you just prevent erosion, but it doesn't necessarily have to be any kind of invasive structure that you have to maintain. It's just a curb opening, maybe a slit, just to allow water to, to go through it. So, there's a variety of, of treatments, but those would be the most, those would be the least invasive treatments.
Do you guys have any data on, I mean, what I spewed out earlier was kind of just a generic Google-type thing, but do you have any hard data on like maintenance costs or maintenance, you know, that you've experienced or could send me?
Yeah, yeah, we can pull, we can pull it together, yeah.
Like traffic signal to standard traffic signal versus a standard roundabout?
Yep.
To, yeah, and that's, I mentioned those cost analysis that other agencies are using. We, some states require that as a, you have to look at the alternatives for intersections and so we have kind of program costs that those agencies use for power per year for a signal and maintenance costs long-term. So, yeah, definitely provide that out.
Are you open to sharing there the PowerPoint with Monty so we can continue to study this?
Oh, this, this is yours. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
And if there's any other information you guys want to have, plenty more PowerPoints to share, just let me know if there's a list and I can send it over to you.
Yeah, if, if you want statistical numbers, we have a lot of studies. Federal highway departments put together a lot of studies that show the percent reduction in crashes and fatalities and that, that was kind of where my thought was on the one note. We've been to a lot of public outreach meetings where people will just Google that, you can Google it and find those statistics and some of the studies will show a, a rise in crashes for roundabouts, but that's in the particular type of crash and so, you know, the statistics get used for all sorts of things. So, that's just one, one side note that particularly when a roundabout's first installed and people are learning them in a new community, you might see a little bit more of those sight swipes, property damages, but in almost all cases, it's that huge reduction in the broadside, the really fatal, serious injury type crashes that are next to impossible in a roundabout just because of the geometry forces, the speeds to be so much slower.
I found it very informative today, so thank you. Commissioner McDaniel, if you're still on, did you have any questions we neglected to ask you? It looks like, it looks like it's still muted. Are you able to unmute Jennifer? No. Well, Mike, if he has some questions, we can send them to you separate, I guess.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, if you think more questions, we're happy to answer them all or provide more information.
Yeah, and I mean, if Commissioner McDaniel does have questions, Chris and I get together weekly on Thursdays to go over because they're, they're in the process of working up several bridges with us and things of that nature, so.
Very good.
It can always be answered.
Very good. I have no more questions.
Thank you.
All right, well, yeah, we appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for your time. Very, very well done.